Welcome, everybody, to our December 2nd City Fairhope Planning Commission meeting. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda. If there is anything that needs to be taken off the consent agenda, a commissioner can make a motion to that effect. If not, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay.
Can we confirm that the approval for the consent agenda is with staff recommendations?
Yes. Yes. Okay. All right. Something we're figuring this out. Are we all right, Chris, with that?
No.
Okay. Sorry. Rewind.
Start over.
Okay. I got a D minus so far this meeting. What do I need to do?
If the commission is going to approve the consent agenda, I need you to specify with staff conditions as part of the motion.
Okay.
And then it can be seconded and voted upon.
Okay. Can I get a new motion, please?
I move we approve the consent agenda. Subject to staff recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right. First item on the agenda, we have no old business that I see. So we'll move into SD 2420, public hearing to consider a two lot subdivision of Magnolia Beach Estates.
Good evening. Mike Jeffries, Planning and Zoning Department. So this is Magnolia Beach Estates subdivision. It's a two lot subdivision. The owner is Ms. Mary Crumpton. Justin Palmer with the Woodlands Group LLC is the authorized agent for the project. Application is, like I said, a two lot minor subdivision located on Laurel Avenue, 104 Laurel Avenue, to be exact. It's approximately 2.4 acres and is zoned R2, medium density. There's an existing residence on the proposed Lot 1. On your screen, you can see on the left is the zoning map. On the right is the aerial. This is located just east of South Mobile Street, across from where the, close to where the American Legion and Elks Lodge are at the corner.
Is everybody's...
Yes.
Should be popping up here pretty quickly. So, as I was saying, on the left hand of your screen is the zoning map. You can see that it is zoned R2, close proximity to the American Legion and the Elks Lodge there at the corner of Gambino's. This is just to the east of South Mobile Street. On your screen is the plat. So there's proposed Lot 1 will be the largest lot that contains the existing residence, Lot 2, the smaller lot. There is a slight error on the site data that a condition of approval will clean up showing reflecting the minimum lot size. In general, all the lots are within 450 feet of a fire hydrant. Lots front on a publicly paved, maintained road. Final plat must be recorded within 120 days. This is a minor subdivision, so a lot of the landscape plans, tree protection plans, and other items for a major subdivision not applicable, and this did not trigger a traffic study. Fairhope subdivision, we do require the provision of sidewalks along all streets in the planning jurisdiction. Sidewalks do not currently exist along Laurel Avenue. The applicant has requested to provide an easement for the sidewalk in lieu of installing the sidewalks. Staff does not support this request. Staff actually recommends the installation of the sidewalk. Speaking with the traffic committee, there has been talks of extending a sidewalk on Laurel to get some connectivity out there towards, to South Mobile Street and making a safe crossway across the street to the bay, and some residents in the area have questioned and petitioned the city previously to try to have some sidewalks on Laurel. So this is one instance where we think that there is a future sidewalk coming to this area and do not support the waiver, but do support the installation of the sidewalks actually at this time, as we have done on several other of these minor projects. The name of the subdivision, Magnolia Beach Estates. It too closely resembles multiple existing subdivisions to avoid confusion. We request that a new name be proposed and that be able to be approved by the planning director. For drainage, the existing flow patterns are not being changed. There is a wetlands that exists on the property and are reflected on the plat with the appropriate wetland buffer. We do need the wetland buffer signs installed and reflected every 100 feet on the plat. Water, sewer, and gas are provided by the City of Fairhope. Power is Riviera. AT&amp;T is the telecommunications provider. And again, the connectivity, staff recommends installation of a sidewalk. With that, staff recommends approval of SD 24.20, Magnolia Beach Estates, with the following conditions. One, installation of the sidewalk along Laurel Avenue, the length of the property. Two, provide a new name for the subdivision to be approved by the planning director. Three, wetland buffer signs are reflected on the plat and installed prior to final signature of the plat. Four, provide a signature block for Fairhope Gas. And five, is adjust the site data table to reflect the minimum lot size is 10,500 square feet. Happy to answer any questions you have for staff. And we have Mr. Justin Palmer with us on behalf of the applicant tonight, and Ms. Crumpton is with us as well for any questions you have may have for them.
Can you tell me how, what the dimensions of Lot 2 are? I can't read that without a magnifying glass.
Yes, sir. The Lot 2 dimensions is 77.5 feet, slightly over the minimum, minimum lot size.
And then the, and then the depth of it?
The depth of it is 150, 140, 150 feet.
Okay.
It's right, right at the minimum standards for a Lot 2.
All right. Any other questions for staff at this time? All right. If not, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Would anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? This is on Laurel Avenue, down fairly close to Gambino's Restaurant, just east of Mobile Avenue. Yes, sir. If you'll, for our record, state your name and your address, please, sir.
Justin Palmer with the Woodlands Group.
Okay.
And thank y'all for your time. Just like to continue to ask if per subregs, it's, I apologize for having to read here, but if so requested, commission may waive the requirement to install sidewalks in the discretion of the commission. Sidewalks will not serve the intended purpose due to the absence of other sidewalks in proximity to the subdivision or due to topographic conditions. In such cases, we may require an easement for sidewalks to be noted on the plat, and we would just like to request if we could have that allowance since there are no current approved plans. I heard there is some conversation, but there are currently no sidewalks on Laurel Avenue, and that's because of the utilities that are very close to the road, along with lots of private improvements that homeowners likely will not give up for sidewalks. So this being the only undeveloped piece on that road, I think it's highly unlikely that sidewalks will even fit in there without, with the, from one end to the other with the utility conflicts that are there. So if that were to come to fruition, we'd have an easement in place, and we just request that y'all grant that under your power of subregs.
Okay. Any questions at this time? Normally, I get the developer to come up later after just, that's fine if you'll stay up front in case somebody has questions, I'll call you back up, and we'll go over those sidewalks a little bit more depth here.
Thank you.
Just a second. Any questions while he's... All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? Yes, sir.
But not to the sidewalks.
No, to the item itself.
To the item.
Yes, sir. And if you'll just state your name and your address for the, our secretary, please, sir.
My name is Michael White, and I'm at 109 Laurel, okay, across the street from the proposed subdivision. And we were notified about this, which, you know, of course, came to a surprise to us, that a Little Woods is going to be a subdivision. And we'd like to know what in the heck's going on? And when is it going to go on? And do we have any input on what's going on? Or is this just a courtesy that says, by the way, you were informed it was going on?
Any specific questions that you have, we can certainly ask the representative, you know, on behalf of Woodlands Group, or any specific concerns that you have about anything.
Well, yeah.
Overall, subdivisions are generally, our purview is to see if it meets the subdivision regulations. We don't have a lot of, you know, a lot of discretion as far as do we, you know, like the woods being gone, or the birds being gone, or the, would we rather this be a large lot than a small lot? Basically, if at the end of the day, the lots meet the requirements in that area, you know, we're pretty much obligated to pass it without some real extremes, extreme circumstances. So if you have specific questions, we can...
Sure. How many units are they planning?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I don't want to assume anything, but we get this concern a lot. People hear subdivisions, and they immediately think of the subdivision sign with a lot of lots. Every split away...
This is one lot, this is basically all the properties there, and on the west side, the map, they're cutting out a 77 by 150 foot.
Basically one new lot. Basically one... There'll be one additional house.
Oh, one additional house.
Yes. So basically, one lot that's 77 by 150 feet.
Okay.
On the westmost side.
Okay. Because, you know, we were just thinking that, when it said subdivision, that it would be something like, if you know, if you're on Mobile Street and you come up here a little bit, and on your left, there's a enclave behind a gate, and we were thinking it was going to be something like that.
The, basically, we have what's called a minor subdivision, and that's that at the end of the subdivision being done, it's four lots or fewer.
I see.
And in this case, the person has two and a half acres, and they're basically cutting about a third of an acre out of that to be a separate lot.
I see. So you're, so it's a subdivision of one unit?
Yes, sir. At the end of the day, that there's one now, there'll be two at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other people have questions concerning this item? All right. In that case, I'll turn the meeting back over to the commissioners. Everything's pretty straightforward. There is a request of, yes, ma'am? Sorry?
Close.
Yes, I thought I said, I'm sorry.
And as a homeowner there, we support the idea of not having any sidewalks.
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn the meeting over to the commissioners at this point. And the, everything's fairly straightforward. The one question is the sidewalk aspect. We do the waivers a fair amount, but whenever there is a case where we could have sidewalks in the future, we do like to look at that. Isn't Gambino's right there on the...
It's close, and I'll tell you what our logic was on this, because we do support some time when there's no sidewalks adjacent, nor is there any planned. With a couple of projects, the Legion has some sidewalks coming out to the right of way. Our Bike Pad has petitioned the city to work on crosswalks and bring that up to, across two Gambino's and somewhere eastward on Laurel, at least to the Elks Lodge area, to get all those safe crossings, and then there's, so we're really close there. So when a subdivision is happening in proximity, we typically default to the, yeah, put sidewalks in at this time.
Can you opt from...
Regarding the utility question, the utilities have supported, if there is going to be a sidewalk on Laurel, they would prefer for it to be on the southern side, because it would cause at least conflict with what they have existing.
Okay.
Which is the...
Yeah, you can come up, yes, sir.
And, and, and all of our right of way folks in utilities have looked at it, and the sidewalk can go in.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, Hunter, is the talk of proposed possible future projects that you mentioned, none of those are on Laurel Avenue? That's on Scenic, Royal, are there any existing on Laurel? Any proposed for Laurel? Is those places you mentioned are not Laurel Avenue?
No, those places aren't on, well, the Elks Lodge corners on Laurel, Gambino's corners on Laurel, and the Legion would come out to Gambino's and or the Elks Lodge. And the talk with the pedestrian committee, the traffic committee, was that a sidewalk going down Laurel to, at some point, would be what a future proposed plan may be, to tie that in, to get it not just across the street, but to also get further into town to allow people that are further up the street to be able to not have to walk in the middle of the road to get down there to the bay.
And the right of way there is a little tight, more so at Gambino's than at Elks Lodge, so if there's room there, there's room here. And while it's not an approved plan yet, that we've already invested, I know I've seen two options on what that layout looks like, so it is, it is in the narrow scope.
It's crossing Laurel at the end by Scenic though?
There's no final plan. There's definitely crossing Mobile and then coming up Laurel to, probably going to have to come eastward at least to the, almost the backside of the Elks Lodge, because their whole front is a parking lot, so it doesn't quite make sense, but that'll, that's yet to be fleshed out.
I just wanted to be clear, there are no other sidewalks on Laurel Avenue.
We understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. All right, commissioners, any further questions for the engineer or the city? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve SD 24.20 subdivision staff recommendations.
All right. I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations, which include installation of the sidewalk, provide a new name for the subdivision, wetland buffer signs will be reflected, provide a signature block for Fairhope Gas, and adjust the site data table to reflect the minimum lot size at 10,500. I have a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay. I've got a second. Choose, this area will be fine. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. All right. The motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, SR 2406. This is a site plan review for Express Oil up on State Highway 181 near Highway 104.
Michelle just found out, found out she's not presenting, but she's done all the heavy lifting, she just took a vacation.
You can go on, Hunter.
A well-deserved vacation last week. Yes, honeymoon, delayed honeymoon.
She's got nothing else to do, she can come up here and I'll take off.
She's, she did a great job on the report. We had some, last week, had some landscape stuff to kind of flesh out, so really, that's the only thing at odds, so I know the details there, and, and I'm going to allow on, everything else seems to be underway, and we won't spend a whole lot of time on that. But this is, this is in the Publix on the 104, 181 side, that's Planters Point subdivision. There was a few different projects that came through the Planning Commission and City Council. The lot is shown here, you see the out parcels, and this is the second lot from the 181 entrance. It is Zone B2. The use is okay. Every out parcel and development there has a mandatory site plan review that comes to you and ultimately to the City Council. This is a proposed national change for a, express oil change. The proposed layout's here with the building, you see the darker is the asphalt. We did ask, you know, is there, there's no requirements, maybe something we want to look at. Our only requirements for impervious surface right now is when they go above the minimum required parking. Any additional has to be impervious. We did ask, since there's so much loading zones and everything else here, to really look at that, they said, you know, the corporate would like to provide the minimum, it's a little easier maintenance. So we looked at setbacks meet, building meets, parking, everything's meeting. The photometric plan, the lights are not, there's no lights proposed in the parking lot, they're all mounted to the building, but the photometric plan does meet our requirements. Mechanical equipment is, the only thing I, I looked on last week, I'm not 100% sure about electric. I know where the transformer is, but I'm going to get to that in just a second when we talk about landscape. This is approximately the building model. The one change is the dumpster enclosure you see in this plan, you can ignore that. It is actually located, and I'll, I'll show you on the plans here. If you can see my mouse, the dumpster where it was originally proposed was out here up front, Highway 181 is to the right side in this, this picture. The dumpster was relocated behind the building, has a screen wall and the screen hedges that are required. So here's, here's kind of what I want to get to in the landscape plans. There's two issues. One's a very clear black and white. There is a dried attention pond in front of the, the building on the Highway 181 side. It right now is proposed as just sod. There's two options to solve this. Per the tree ordinance, that has to be screened from all adjacent properties, including a right of way property. So they did provide screening from the two adjacent B2, but not from the, the Highway 181 side. So there will after, actually have to be a screen provided, and that's, that's prescribed of what kind of shrubs and what kind of density to create a impervious screen. Or I have the right to waive those requirements when someone does a bio-retention pond. So that's what I recommended, and there's a list of plants to use, and you see those all the way up and down Greeno Road, Highway 98. You see that utilized a lot. This was what we got as far as the plans go, so that one's got to be changed. In addition to this other issue, I think tonight...
Would, would that issue be covered under the revised landscape plan if we approve subject to staff recommendations?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So for that one, I think that's an easy black and white, you know, I think we can handle that before it gets to planning, to the City Council. The other one is a little bit less clear. So when you go into the, the road here on the Rockwell Boulevard side, side, that's the, the internal road that fronts the, the grocery store parking lot. There is a right of way that's, that's public, and then there is a seven and a half foot utility easement on the plat. There's a sidewalk, and then they're, they've got a good landscape plan. The shrubs, the density of shrubs there, and the tree, tree trees are good. However, on this property, they, I know the water and sewer mains are right there within that easement. They're not in the road like on a lot of subdivisions. They're right there in that space. I believe the electric is too, but all we had was electric availability letter that actually says they have to provide a 15-foot easement, which actually extends into the parking lot. So, you know, there's, there's things that are not shown on this landscape plan, like meters and irrigation meters and other, just accoutrements for those utilities, but I think long term, if it was just the trees, I don't think we'd have a problem with it. As people are in there, this is private water, or private sewer, you know, having to make repairs, things like that, they can usually work around trees, but when you've got a screen for the parking lot, that's kind of hard to work around. So, you know, this is one of those things that's not a requirement, it's just, I see a conflict here for long-term maintenance. I think there's a simple solution. If everything just shifts, the building setbacks, nothing else is, is wrong, but if everything shifts toward, shifts toward Highway 181 about five feet, the whole, take the whole site plan, move it five feet, all that landscape requirements gets out, out from over top of all those utilities, and I think we, we can have a solution combined with the screening of the detention pond, so...
That would still be covered under number four revised landscape plan.
Absolutely.
Could be approved by the city staff, okay?
Perfect. And there's, we, we kind of gave some of those utility plans, there's a, you know, kind of showed those, it's in your staff report on where the utilities are. They are not shown on the landscape plan, but that's really the only conflict we had, just wanted to, you know, they're, while they designed these out parcels, they didn't account for the stormwater maintenance in the pond on the public site, so everybody's having to provide their own stormwater, and they do have an application in with ALDOT to, to drain that to the, the right of way of 181. We'll have to see that before constructions, permits are finalized, but I don't, don't foresee that being a problem. There's a, something here, I mean, we're going to handle this at the staff level. When we received the plat for this, there were some trees planted. We didn't sign the plat until we got clarification, because there's also a pedestrian easement of paralleling 181, and Mike did a good job. We supposed the trees were in the pedestrian easement. We got a as-built drawing saying the trees were not. Well, now the, this company's went out and did the survey, and they're squarely in the middle of where the sidewalk's supposed to be, so there's going to have to be some relocation of, of not just these trees, but the others. Not something we got to get into too much depth. If y'all recall, there was a overall traffic study done for the subdivision, and each slot will be looking at what their trip generations are. Of course, the first one's not going to trigger any additional studies, but we're just keeping the cumulative count as, as the out parcels develop. There's two commercial dumpsters, and, and this is the staff recommendations. We do recommend approval with updating the site data table to reflect the percentage of lot covered by building. Sinage is must conform to the sign ordinance. Some of the plans you see have a lot of signage that won't meet, we just want to make that clear. And then the revised landscape plans for staff comments that further includes correct square footage for the site, as well as evergreen shrub, there's 36 inches tall at planting to screen the dried attention, and the other things we discussed. And then number four, ALDOT consent and confirmation to use the right of way for drainage off Highway 181. I'll be here if you have any further questions. This is actually not a public hearing, but...
Your recommendations are somewhat different from what I'm hearing.
Did the slides get updated for my edits on Wednesday?
I think I changed three to do the staff comments that we added.
Okay. Take your, I believe the, what's in your staff report covers any landscape requirements, including, they had, because if, 36 may not be, inches may not be needed if they choose bio-retention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody's here.
Yeah, you should have.
I'm here.
All right. Any other questions for Hunter while he's up? All right. If not, if you'll come on up and see if we have a few questions for you.
Sure. So Nicholas Oster, he works, he works with our firm. He's got to be in Knoxville, Tennessee at 9:30 tomorrow morning, so he's asked me to fill in for him. He is engineer of record, but I'm one of the owners of CCI, so he works for us.
Okay, cool.
I'm going to answer as many questions as I can. I believe I'm caught up to speed enough to do so.
Okay.
But if I have to go look through my files, now you know why.
I was, I had a question.
I'm sorry. I'm JT Murphy with CCI.
Okay, thank you.
Hunter, I related to you, like, there's a minimum requirement for pervious parking spaces once you connect stuffs, is what's required by the city. And that you guys didn't want to provide any more of those because of maintenance?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I just asked that you consider if you have four spaces and half of them are true grid and the other half are not, it may be more of a pain to keep the gravel off the, the two that are asphalt, and the whole thing would look a lot cleaner and better if that whole run was just the pervious spaces.
Sure. I understand.
It sort of, you know, it just screams like, somebody forced me to do this. This isn't a client issue. Instead of, here's my nice pervious lot. And I don't know how we clean that up to make it so we're not, you know, awkward.
Right.
But would, are you guys, would you guys be willing to, are you...
We've asked our client that question. They declined to increase the pervious pavement.
Then do you, did they have, were they presented with the comments today? What were their feelings about bio-retention versus the screening?
Honestly, I don't know if they saw the comments for bio-retention, and honestly, I would have to look at the design requirements for bio-retention. I don't know if someone here could maybe give me like a 30-second brief on the bio-retention, and Mike could kind of weigh in on that pretty quickly.
Sure. I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of detailed information on what to do there, it's just the plant material. So as, as we were told, it's kind of a dry pond, covered in sod right now. Essentially, the, the sod is replaced with the plants that are on our retention plant list.
Like cattails, cypress trees, things like that. You just kind of put them in there, and they help, you know, peer the water when it goes, purify the water when it goes down.
Sure. Does that require like a infiltration media at the bottom of the pond?
Uh, I mean, there's, there's not a whole lot of detailed information on what to do there. It's just the plant material. So as, as we were told, it's kind of a dry pond, um, covered in sod right now. Essentially, the, um, the sod is replaced with the plants that are on our, uh, retention plant list.
Like cattails, cypress trees, things like that. You just kind of put them in there and they help, you know, pure the water when it goes, purify the water when it goes down.
Does that require like a, uh, infiltration media at the bottom of the pond and filtration?
I've seen that required. I think there's a little leeway on what bio-retention is. Um, that's, I, and sorry, um, you know, Paul is not here tonight. One of our commissioners that would be able to answer this, um, thoroughly, but, um, he helped write the tree ordinance. Uh, I did talk to him on Friday and there has to be some kind of filtering component, whether that's by media or plants, I think is a designed, yeah, designed, um, a design issue.
The reason I ask is depending on the requirements, those can be costly items, especially if you start talking about an engineered infiltration media below the pond.
No, I think I, let's double check and we can, I think that the staff recommendation covers that under the landscape. I think that would be part of the landscape and it would be something that I believe, I believe, and I'm not going to put this in writing and sign it right here, but I believe like cattails and the plants in there are considered filtration.
Like a wetlands.
Medium cells because they, because they, they purify the water.
And we had, we, we, yeah, in our previous meeting, we did talk about that and showed the tree, or, you know, said, hey, look at the tree ordinance, there's a list. So I know that probably you guys are not designing the landscape plan, but, and we, we're not talking directly with the landscape architect. They did a, a good job.
Screening required, you know, it's, instead of screening something that's barren.
Right.
You're moving the plant material into it.
Yeah.
Look nicer, but then be functionally nicer.
Yes, ma'am. So the staff comments state that we can either screen it with thirty-six inch hedge heights or go with a bio-retention cell?
Well, and, and that's, that's where there's some screening issues that will, there's some notes in there also on planting heights of screening around parking. Some of those are forty-eight inches.
Yeah.
But yes, whatever is required for the, uh, in the tree ordinance, um, and we can certainly help you get to those details.
Sure.
Um, are, are you from the Fairhope area?
I'm not. I'm from, I grew up in Evergreen, a little bit north.
I was going to mention our soccer fields here have a example of that, that if you've been to the soccer fields, you would have seen them.
And quite a few of the businesses along Reno Road have the same thing. I mean, there's, there, that's what we kind of recommended, take a look at on the way out when Nicholas was here. There, and, and take a look at that. There's, there's quite a few.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't assume it's more costly.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't either.
We'll look at that, we'll look at that closely.
In either case, there's a maintenance thing, um, and it, and that's, I think most of the comments we can handle on a revised set of landscape plans and we can certainly talk after this meeting about the details.
Any further questions for the applicant at this time? All right, thank you very much. You know, there used to be about a half dozen of these, you know, types of oil change places and I don't know what happened to all of them, but kind of been nice to have one again. I was, had a conversation the other day that I haven't seen any of those in quite some time. Um, commissioners, any more questions for the staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Uh, this is not a public, anybody here wish to speak to this item? It's not a public hearing, but if somebody has any questions or concerns, I don't mind. All right.
Mr. Chairman, you mind if I just revise that condition forward for clarity's sake?
Yes, sir.
Is even the staff report, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this in the record. A revised landscape plan, um, will be required that addresses all concerns mentioned in the staff report and during the meeting and shall be approved by staff prior to submission of the site plan to the city council for final approval.
All right. Madam Secretary, do you have that?
Did we just modify the, the stipulations?
No, just.
No, I just, a small detail where we said a thirty-six inch, that might not be the choice you make.
Oh, there was, there was something in there you mentioned a while ago about moving the entire site five feet. Is that in your landscape?
That is, that's what we're talking about, yes.
Because there might be a little negotiation with some pervious pavement if we could.
I, I, I think those are two separate issues, yeah. Um, essentially what they've proposed to do is all, I'm sorry, I'm going to talk forward. Uh, but all of the planning material is right on top of, of pretty much all the easements right in front of the property in the same five-foot area. They don't like trees sitting on top of sewer water lines and I don't, and maybe electric too, so. And I think it'll be a nightmare in the long run. Um, we can, we can talk that through and any details we can work out. If, if they don't like that option, we can either come back here or go to city council.
I got a sixteen hundred dollar water bill from Mobile Area Water and Sewer System where I'm watering the, the storm sewer in front of the road on downtown Boulevard very nicely. So it's, uh, it's going to be a quite expensive repair out there to say the least.
This site does have a lot of easements.
Yeah, yeah. So I would, I would think, you know, that moving something and having those out would, in the long run for everyone's building, well, thank you twenty years in the future, that's for sure.
Well, and, and I'd want to say here too as well, we don't have maintenance bonds, things like that on any of these, but any of these screenings are requirements. If we drive by and there's a shrub dead and there's a, you know, hey, go replace it. And, you know, we're going to be probably talking to somebody in there changing oil that's going to look at us crazy, but we'll have to all chase that down. And, and that becomes a headache. That's, this is a long-term solution, not just when it's built.
Sure. All right, commissioners, any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I recommend that we, all right, I move that we recommend approval from the city council of S R twenty-four point six, press oil change, subject to staff recommendations with number four being revised. Recommendation stated by.
Do I have a second? I have a motion of second to approve subject to staff recommendations, including the update of number four. Uh, any further discussion? You want to, want that to be read into the, okay? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is Z C twenty-four point oh-nine Talawampa Single Family Subdivision.
Good evening. So this is, the applicant is Jay Broton, acting on behalf of the owner, Talawampa Properties LLC and requesting a conditional annexation to R two, medium-density single-family residential district to be known as, which is the Talawampa subdivision. The property is approximately five point two acres and is located on Gafer Road Extension. The property is currently zoned RSFE by Baldwin County. And I'll get a little more of those size requirements for that county's in, in a minute. On the screen, you can see on the aerial on your right and the zoning map on your left, this is fairly close to the intersection of Gafer Road and Bishop Road, located just to the west side, actually right next door to another development, um, ten tops that we have looked at, um, in the past. Subject property currently is vacant. Subject property is bordered to the east by the Fairhope P U D. Ten tops at Gafer, ordinance seventeen eighty-nine, recently annexed into the city after the development was approved as an unzoned property. Um, zoned R A to the north, to the west, county zoned B one, to the south across Gafer Road, extension by county zoned RSFE and county zoned B two. So in short, when the county, um, zoning and was enacted in this area, this got surrounded by a lot of county zoned property. There's a lot of unzoned property in the area. The referendum brought in these properties under county zoning and this being a vacant large lot was given zoning designation RSFE. Some of the other zonings for, such as the business that are right next to it, was from a development or a business that was currently existed and the county gave a like zoning designation to what existed. Um, as with any request on the zoning map amendment, we considered the initial desire as well as how the property may be utilized in the future. Again, the surrounding county zoned by Baldwin County's, uh, fairly recent. They were developed while the properties were unzoned, thus giving those mixtures of uses in the area. Staff does not believe that this area supports the density of R two. R two has a minimum, uh, requirement of seventy-five foot wide and ten thousand five hundred square foot lot area. Annexing into this city as R one would be a more appropriate zoning. The current RSF E county zoning has a minimum hundred and sixty-five foot minimum wide lot for the frontage and an eighty thousand square foot minimum lot area. So in reference, that is twice as large as what our R one zoning currently is. And on the screen below are those RSFE, um, dimensional requirements and setback requirements um, out of the Baldwin County's zoning ordinance. Some of the things we looked at was compliance with the comprehensive plan. The twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan has this area categorized as a suburban residential area, which includes some of the largest lot sizes within single-family detached neighborhoods. Um, you know, similarly, the previous comp plan that we had, um, also had this area zoned as a rural area with large lots. Compliance with standards and goals and tender the ordinance, um, does not meet. The property is currently RSFE by Baldwin County and this more similar district would be R one. Uh, character of the surrounding property, uh, response was does not meet as the surrounding properties are comprised of larger lots with the buildings pushed further from the street. Adequacy of public infrastructure, um, that meets. A subdivision or any improvement would require improvements to the existing infrastructure. Impacts on natural resources, including existing conditions. The zoning change will not negatively impact that, um, as the zoning ordinance, tree ordinance already provide protections and buffers. Compliance with other laws and regulations, um, this does meet. Any future development would be subject to all applicable laws of the city. Uh, compliance with laws, regulations of other jurisdictions and the rest of them. Any future development would be subject to applicable laws. And then number eight, number nine, kind of similar impact of property or surrounding neighborhoods due to noise, traffic, visible intrusion, potential physical impacts, property values. Uh, response to that was adjacent properties would be impacted less by a less dense zoning. Uh, with that, staff's recommendation is denial of case Z C twenty-four point zero-nine, conditional annexation to R two, Gafer Road Extension of Talawampa Properties. I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff and we do have an applicant with us, uh, tonight representing Talawampa Properties and, uh, the next two slides are a presentation that they have prepared, uh, to present to you guys.
Any questions for staff at this time? Um, R one is, uh, what, fifteen thousand?
Is a fifteen thousand square foot.
Versus, so it'd be.
It's a hundred foot minimum lot wide, lot width.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you. Um, I'll go ahead if the, um, engineer of record would like to say anything at this time.
Mr. Turner, Commissioner, how are you all? My name is Anderson Reed. I am the applicant on here. Um, I would like to say thank you for staff for, um, looking at this for us and thank you guys for your time tonight. Um, I understand that this is currently unzoned in the county and for us to develop the site, which would be our, our intention, we develop this site, would be to annex into Fairhope. Uh, this is currently unzoned RSFE in, in, in the county. I would like to say that sometimes it's not all black and white as to what these properties are or not. As you said, there's previous, uh, businesses and, and, and other things on these properties that currently exist that might be unzoned, which is why I kind of put together this presentation for you that I'd like, I'd like to kind of go one by one and look at this. The property to the east is a duplex property. It's zoned PUD. It has about twenty units on it. It's ten, ten units, uh, per building. The property to the west is an active business. It's a law firm. Uh, there are numerous lawyers in this law firm. Um, the property just on the other side of the road from us, though it's unzoned in the city of Fairhope. Um, active church, Jehovah's, I think it's Jehovah's Witness, I think it says on the next slide. I actually like this presentation. No one else does this. This is nice. On the next slide, you see, yeah, Kingdom Hall of Jehovah's Witness across the street. Uh, again, to the west, Stokowski Myrick Law Firm. On the east, it has a picture of the ten duplex PUD. And then going down the road from basically the site to Reno Road, there's a salon. There's an early childcare center. There's a country place, senior living. There's multiple apartments. You've got Arbor Gates, Palladium, that's not labeled, but Palladium across from the senior living place. The manic apartments to the east on the corner of Bishop and Gafer and, uh, the Grace Ware Apartments down on Bishop Road. So as you can see, this is a very dense area. I know that the president's is R one to annex into Fairhope. The city's comprehensive plan does state that it is suburban development. I believe it's page forty-eight of the comprehensive plan says that suburban development is actually suited for seventy-five foot lots, which this would be, as R two is what we are asking for. This would be a seventy-five foot wide lot, which is ten thousand five hundred square feet, roughly about a quarter of an acre, which is what the comprehensive plan does state. Um, which kind of leads me to the, the point on, if you go back, can I go up? Okay, so right here, compliance with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the response, I do believe that it is in compliance with comprehensive plan, being that, like I said, it is seventy-five to a hundred foot lots is what the suburban residential zoning on the comprehensive plan states that you were looking for. Um, additionally, on number eight, impacts on adjacent property. Adjacent properties would be impacted less by a less dense zoning. I feel that more rooftops here, um, would actually increase the businesses on the street. There's multiple businesses on this street already, whether they're in the city of Fairhope or not. Um, so I believe more rooftops would actually benefit them more than less rooftops. So I, I would love for you guys to consider, let's see, where are we? This map that I've put together, the uses that are currently there and though you want to set a precedent of lesser density on this corridor, I think that the precedence is already set. And I'm not asking for, we are not asking for a super dense, uh, zoning regulation here. We're merely asking for an R two zoning designation versus an R one, which I believe fits within the zoning of the surrounding properties. So if you have any questions, welcome to answer them.
We should, yeah, but any questions for the developer at this time? All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, of course. No problem. Thank you.
Go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, we, uh, this is actually a zoning change, which is a, uh, ordinance that can only be done by the city council, so we will make a recommendation to the city council. Um, at the end of this, uh, after we have our public hearing and discussions, we will, what we say will simply be a recommendation to the city council and they will ultimately have the final decision on this. So with that said, um, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to speak to this item? All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing in that case, uh, turn the meeting back over to the commissioners. Well, they're asking, they're not asking for R one, they're asking for R two. I think, um, tell me if I'm wrong, Chris and/or Hunter, if they wanted to come into the city council, they would automatically get R one, correct? That would, they, they wouldn't even come in front of us for that, would they?
No.
That's just automatic.
That'd be straight annexation and just a lease.
We're talking about they would like, you know, forty-five hundred square foot less on the lots there. And they're pointing, you know, duplex next door and then the, you know, some of those properties, you know, have some density to them, but that's one area where we've had concerns with, with drainage and the soils out there are pretty much grady soils that are very difficult to capture water in and it's not a real, uh, pedestrian-friendly, uh, area at this point.
And especially.
Chairman, if I made the, on the duplexes next door, I just wanted to remind you, that was a, it's own P U D, it's in the city. It was duplexes prior when it was an unzoned. I think, I don't want to be confused at all that it's not an unzoned piece of property that we're looking at, that any of these properties around are unzoned. It's either zoned by the county or it's zoned by the city. When the property next door came into the city as a P U D, that P U D covered what was already approved multiple occupancy project that only had subdivision approval with that in an unzoned area. And we were very clear at that point that this P U D, albeit it has twenty units on it and is a higher dense, that this is in no way setting a precedent that this area is set up and designed for a higher density type prop, projects moving on in the future.
Well, you could also draw an argument that, you know, depending on how much green space they have, they would be getting, you know, close to that many units possibly on a R two. I mean, when you take five acres, was that, um, you, you know, you take the square footage, of course. I know that when you come down, you don't, you know, get a hundred percent yield. You have to have your water retention and your green space, but still you're, you know, talking about not that many units different.
Well, and a little bit of the. Sorry, thank you, Chris. A little bit of the, the history there to add on with what Mike said. That was also what the county has stated, you know, the, with the zoning, nothing is, before it's kind of precedent. A little bit of history. A little bit of history specifically for this area. When you see the, the zoning map that shows, and I'm gonna back up one, because there was two zoning maps shown in our, our report, both ours and the county, and if you look at all the, what's white here, it's mostly eighty thousand square foot lots. But the green there, that's, for example, that is R4. That happened in nineteen ninety-three. Even later conversations said, you know, this is not the area we want that. We don't want to have the improvements to Gayfer Road, like, that would handle that kind of traffic. You all know when we had unzoned areas and had a jurisdiction that, that we don't get to talk about the, the, the development pattern as much as we do in zoned areas. So I, I think now we have zoning here and, and the request is coming into the city, what, what matches our, that's a pretty simple review for us. This has been pretty consistent and while they are absolutely correct on the single-family residential seventy-five to a hundred foot, that's for everything around the city that is proposed as that place type within the comp plan. In this area specifically, you know, there was more parks and open areas than, than you would see in other single-family residential areas. I believe even the two thousand fifteen said, this is where all the city parks should be, right around, around this area, because some of those low areas and low, you know, traffic driving uses, but, so there's a little lot more history than just us, you know, making an arbitrary, you know, call on this one.
Any further questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion. I've got a motion to recommend denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of recommending, recommending denial, say aye. Any, any opposed? All right, the motion to recommend denial passes unanimously. Moving on, last item on the agenda, ZC twenty-four-ten, rezoning of B1 for Sweetwater. Sweetwater Circle.
R1 to B1. Thank you.
Excuse me, yes, R1 to B1, Sweetwater Circle.
Okay.
Actually drove that.
Oh, good. Site visit. Okay, so the authorized agent is Kathy Barnett, which is here on behalf of the owner, which is represented by Mr. Metcalf, which is always also here. The request is for the subject property rezoned from R1, low-density, single-family residential district to B1, local shopping district. If you guys don't know, it's located at the terminus of Sweetwater Circle off of South Mobile Street and the subject property is actually currently four parcels that total approximately two acres. They want to combine all those parcels to rebuild the Sweetwater Supper Club that burned down on scenic highway ninety-eight. So a replat will be required into one large parcel. There, the collective parcels, but various different zoning, including both Baldwin County and the city. So for Baldwin County, there's the RSF1, B2, and CR parcels in the back, which you'll see in the map in a minute, and then also city zoned R1 is to the south. And this is, if this goes through, this is one of many reviews, because for the restaurant use they want, they're gonna have to do a BOA case and there'll be other things as well, including a site plan. And this will also go on to city council, this review. Okay, so that's what we're talking about. It's those, they're in the Sweetwater Circle, which you can probably better recognize from here, for you guys that don't, might not be familiar, where that blue sign is, that is the Sweetwater Circle. And this is all at the end of it. That's the site plan. It's not, this is not the final site plan, it's just a pretty picture to kind of give you an idea of what they're thinking. And again, it wants to go to B1, local shopping district, and those are the uses available. It is, yes. And I think there's another one in here too, and there's some more detailed stuff in this full staff report.
And just for the history lesson, because I don't think you were on the planning commission at the time, those three lots came to the commission, there was a wetland delineation done, it's over five years, because it had some core related things, there was a new delineation done that, that clarified any protections and there's a combined easement shown there with a buffer.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's definitely there. Kathy can tell you all about it. Okay, it's, like I said, it's currently four vacant parcels, and they were actually annexed in the city in April two thousand six, ordinance number twelve ninety-nine. And then a later subdivision case created to preserve its Sweetwater, which is in this slide, and that shows the four, and you can see the one, two, three, and there's the common area. This down here is the R1 for the city, and these are the various county ones up here. There's a better map in the staff report. So there are jurisdictional wetlands and the Sweetwater branch to the north of the subject property. There are proper, proper buffers protecting the water bodies and they're on, they're in place on the plat for the subdivision, which again will have to be replatted administratively prior to moving on to the site plan review, because it's four parcels. So a more detailed landscaping plan will be necessary to later review. The landscape plan shall reflect the screening of vehicle use areas, as will provide for those buffers for incompatible land uses, since this collective parcels are directly adjacent to both city and county residential zoning, whereas this is going to be business, and also of the county's conservation resource district, whatever that may be. Because we're not sure. The Sweetwater Circle, the road is in the county, the road approached the subject property and it's zoned B2 by the county, all those businesses are. B1 in the city of Fairhope most closely resembles Baldwin County's B2, so this B1 ask is appropriate. And that's another just pretty rendering, that's not necessarily how it's going to end up looking, but like to include pretty pictures. Then you can see.
This is a zoning request, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't even know why we're looking at that picture.
Yeah, yeah. Well, right. So we'll take it out next time. Sometimes I like pretty pictures.
That's the one thing that always bothers me on zoning requests. I mean, we approved this at B1 and they go before the board of adjustments who says no, and they've already got the B1, so we end up with a dry cleaner by right. I just, we just need to forget about the picture and the cute pictures.
Duly noted.
And, and just say that, you know, what's allowed by right and by request would be one.
And there you go. These are the ones, we do recommend approval and with the following condition, so they've got those allowed uses, but this is for an asker restaurant use, so if they want to do something different, then it would have to come back.
And sorry, Michelle, this was, you were out last week. I, I removed those in the staff report, because we've done that a couple of times and we had conversations at city council to stop, you know, with the restricting uses as much as possible. Either we're happy with B1 and anything that may come along, or.
Okay.
Yeah. I think you put it back in, but yeah, I, I left it out with just that, I think we, any zoning change needs to be looked at that way. Trying to, we did that a couple of times.
Yeah, we did.
And we, we kind of had a conversation like, we don't, you know, that, that does not need to be the norm.
Okay, good. One last thing. Awesome. No pretty pictures. So it is rezoning request for the restaurant, so any change other than a restaurant would have to meet all the applicable regulations and stuff at that time. And of course, it needs a replat before moving.
Allowed by right.
Right, yeah.
Which means somebody could put it in elementary school without getting it re-approved, a school or a dry cleaner.
They're gonna have to still get.
Right.
Approved. There, there's a review process, that one's just an administrative one, looking at permits and.
They'll have to get a mop, but I mean, I'm.
Right.
I'm just wondering, well, let's go ahead with the meeting, I've got some questions I want to ask a little bit. Any questions for staff at this time?
One detail, and Michelle didn't highlight, there is, you know, especially considering with the last, in the comp plan, we did, you know, acknowledge kind of this area is kind of a neighborhood, I won't go so far as to say, we titled, I believe, neighborhood nodes.
Yes.
Place type, not a village node, very small, smaller. So this B1 actually aligns with that long-range plan in our currently adopted comp plan.
All right. All right, thank you, ma'am.
And to be clear, it's approved, we've recommended approval with the condition that it's listed in the staff report, not what is listed on the screen.
All right.
Mr. Metcalf, do you have anything to add at this time? If not, I can open the public hearing first and know that you're back there if you have, if we have any questions for you. All right, thank you. In that case, I'd like to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? This is at the dead end of Sweetwater Circle down there in Battle's Wharf. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I, I've got a question of, why are we looking at B1 rather than one of the, you know, B3 zoning options?
The tourist resort?
I mean, my, I mean, I, I like the, the picture of the hotel, you know, the restaurant there, it's kind of a neat spot to have a restaurant in there. I don't, you know, have a per se interest, you know, the people who are actually doing the restaurant always do a nice job with whatever they do, but you know, these, these zonings go forever. And my concern is if, if they don't get the restaurant approved by the board of adjustments or if at some point whoever owns it gets bored of owning a restaurant, you've got, you know, quite a few items in there by rights, such as convenience stores and service stations and, and a lot of items that are, you know, by right, that, you know, I don't know how well they actually would, would go there.
Well, and, and I guess we, we know some of the.
If we had B3B, then, you know, I wouldn't mind the, you know, I wouldn't have any issues with bed and breakfast being back there, a little boutique motel or some, you know, some of those things might really be kind of neat in that area. I'm going to be a real quiet area for a venue, you know, since there aren't any houses really surrounding it very close. But, but just some of those B1 by rights, you know, scare me and then I might be a little more comfortable with some of the B, with the B3 options on that.
Sweetwater houses are right adjacent to.
Yeah, their house is right around. I wouldn't want to see a bench space or anything.
You could touch them.
And the businesses here kind of do.
It's right to the right. The first house on the north side is, can see into that.
Well, that's a, that's a commercial building there.
First house in Sweetwater is residential. They back, they're a little bit further back, but they look right into that lot.
And they're back, the, the area that was put in a conservation easement for those lots to the residential lots to the south in the city.
Can you go back to that?
Which one?
Yes, please. I don't see any.
Right here, right here is your residence.
Yeah, those are R1.
Basically one backyard, but just saying compared, you know, most of it's back there pretty good, nothing to the north, but, I mean, regardless, I mean, that's the same thing we're talking about with the B1. I mean, you put a, you know, convenience store right there next to it or what have you. Again, I, you know, there are a lot of little of the B3.
And I had to thank Chris for pulling this up, because we had to look at the, we, we kind of, early on, looked at what would be the most appropriate. B1 matched closely to what is adjacent in the county was most closely. So there were some uses in B3B that were allowed, that also we didn't think was appropriate for this area. So either one kind of had some uses that, you know, might, might not have been perfect for the area. An outdoor recreation facility in one of the Bs, you know, there, there's some batting cages and things like that that are allowed and. So it, it's kind of. What's your, and, and, and we also like, well, whereas convenience stores are used by right, there's also conditions to that. And being right there by that wetland and, and the traffic and it's not even, it's a private road, Sweetwater's a private road, so there, there's a lot of things that will prevent a lot of those uses literally by right, but when they get into the technical merits of can you do it, they're not going to be able to do something with that kind of volume and that kind of commercial.
Do you have anything to add?
Yes, sir, I was gonna answer some questions if it would be helpful. I'm Kathy Barnett with Dewberry.
Okay.
And so one of, just a, a couple of items that we looked at and tried to address and taking staff's recommendations for what would be the most suitable district, knowing that we would have to go back with a special exception. And obviously, your concern is the perpetual use and right of the site and is it compatible? I understand that. So we did redelineate the site, we did add additional wetlands to the previous plat, because it is a Tai Tai swamp, we have the buffers, so we wanted to make sure to hold the integrity. So that does provide a little bit of a buffer and a usage that previously was not necessarily there, I guess. It is becoming one lot through the process, so that kind of helps. I think with that procedure, you know, the city to protect itself could wait through that special exception process as we move through the, through this kind of steps and not create the one lot, so that then you'd have three lots would make it very difficult to have an, an additional usage, because currently it's three lots. With your B1, we're actually ultimately going to make it one lot, but if you didn't like that, it'd be nearly impossible to have a use to, without the replat. So I think that that gives a protection for the city as well as kind of moving this process forward. I know you don't like conditional approvals, I don't know if it's even a possibility, but the applicant would certainly say that if the special exception was not granted, if we could confirm that the application would be withdrawn or conditioned upon the special exception, I think that that might be something that we'd be willing to, he's not here for me to confirm that that's the case, but I think that that would be his intention as well, so if that provided another assurance, because we realize that you've got to look at all things. Dry cleaners used to be the, the scary one. Obviously, people aren't cleaning on-site anymore, so it's not the same level of use, you know, it's really just drop off at this point. So again, it does fit the neighborhood, but we're, we're willing to hear what the city needs to give you those assurances, but I did want to kind of highlight some of those facts as well, so, yes, sir.
That's a very good point she made. We could make a recommendation to the city council, you know, make a suggestion that they have a special exception, that if they don't get the restaurant approval from the board of adjustments, that it stays R. Could we not? If they, if they offer that?
The hard part is that the board of adjustment application would be on a property that's not zoned.
That's currently zoned R1.
That's currently zoned R1, which would not then prohibit that, allow that use anyway, so we can't really take an application on a differently zoned property.
I mean. Hold on, just a second, Kathy. Let me, let me, listen, the, the restriction of uses is more of our thing, that we're, we don't like to set. We've already done it, so if that's what you need to do to restrict the uses, that's much easier than trying to be creative with too many other things. So if there's some specific uses in B1 that, that you don't like, just say, those aren't allowed.
Just restrict it to a restaurant, period. And then if at some point somebody wants to come back again and ask for, you know, that's not a permanent, we're not, you know, going into, you know, carving that into stone next to Moses, you know, with the Ten Commandments, and if they at some point want to come back with another request, then they could have another request.
Any change in the use other than restaurants? Yeah, okay.
What would they amend there? And I'm, I'm gonna talk that, talk that through, because zoning request comes in as, as B1 with a limitation of only one use. I'm ju, even if it's twenty years down the road, what would they come back and amend? It's not a PUD, so you're not.
They could just ask for another zoning, or they could just add a request for another use.
Or remove that restriction.
With a restriction, it would be city council could do it.
Amend that certain ordinance number.
They would just come in and ask us, we would make a recommendation to, for or against in city council, do it or not.
So I think it would be an amendment to that ordinance number in the future for potential sunset clause on the, if the use, if it's not built in a year.
You're okay. I mean, that, that, that would be the cleanest, if you're, hey, that, that's what's being proposed.
I mean, I like the idea of a restaurant back there, I think a little boutique, you know, hotel with a half dozen units, it'd be really cute, a lot of little cute items, but that's a very, you know, I'm very familiar with that Tai Tai swamp, you know? My mom and aunt just donated seventy acres of it to the Weeks Pay Reserve, and I've been all over it before, and it's one of the most helpful things environmentally that there is, the way that it purifies that water. and it's one of the most helpful things environmentally that there is, the way that it purifies that water going through the white sand back there. And so you'd hate to have anything that would disturb it, but, you know, I don't think that that, you know, the nice thing about a restaurant is so many people are there, and so many people see it and look at it, that you're not really, it's not like a gas station dumping their oil out back with nobody really seeing it or anything.
Commissioners, any questions? The applicant's got someone here. Staff's here, if there are any questions, please ask them. If not, I will entertain a recommendation. Chris, you look like you're thinking.
Have you opened up for any public hearing yet?
I think I opened and closed.
Apologize.
I ate a lot of Thanksgiving turkey, so I'm not gonna put my hand on the Bible on that one, I'll open and close it again if we're not sure. Got turkey brain. Okay, okay, good. All right, commissioners, do I have a motion?
Well, I mean, I think that's-
I've got a motion to recommend approval, subject to staff recommendations. Additionally, that it will only be allowed to be a restaurant on the property, do I have a second?
Where are you second? Just one amendment, and you add on, but we would need to add, if approved by Board of Adjustment, we can't give them the right for a restaurant. But that would be the only use, we're not granting that right right now, but just-
You can draw on if approved by Board of Adjustments. Do we even need to put that in if it's got to be approved by the Board of Adjustments anyway?
Yes.
Okay. Subject to, and subject to Board of Adjustment approval. I can restate it during the, I'll restate it during the further discussion, if that's comfortable with Chris.
And also, please clarify, there were some staff recommendations on the screen that may be different than staff recommendations that were in the packet, so let's make sure we're on the same page of what are the staff recommendations.
And the only difference was about uses, so you're clarifying that with your amended use.
I've got a motion to approve, subject to the, a motion to to approve, subject to staff recommendations, and that the only allowable use will be a restaurant, and acknowledgement that the restaurant approval does have to furthermore be approved by the Board of Adjustments. And I have a second for that, I've got the motion. Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you had said. The Board of Adjustments. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? So basically, recommend approval, restaurant only, still has to go to the Board of Adjustments. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously? Is that, that's everything, no more old business? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. No second reading on that.
Need, motion class.